All right. Alyssa? Welcome to the ninth meeting of the year. Today is April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Reason for the meeting being held at the South River Middle School, which we do appreciate their services. Sixty-one Main Street elevator is not operable, so we had to have the meeting here. Alyssa, can you please start off the statement?
In compliance with Chapter two thirty-one of Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, posted on municipal building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River. As amended in a public notice advertised on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, this meeting will be held at the South River Middle School Capitorium, three Montgomery Streets, South River.
Roll call, please. I was just saying that.
Can't get any closer.
Just saying. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gindy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas. Councilman Seula.
Here.
Councilman DeZemian.
Here.
Councilman Gershensky.
Here.
Councilman Krenzel is not here. Council President Olivera.
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as a whole.
Please stay standing for a moment. You may be seated. We have one proclamation, which is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is on April fourteenth to the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response to police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians are critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the South River Police Department's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the South River Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past year. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Peter S. Gindy, along with the members of the Council of the Borough of South River, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth to April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week of South River in honor of the men and women who diligently and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe, given under the hand and the seal of the Borough of South River, New Jersey, this eighth day of April twenty-fourth. Chief, can you please? If you could pass it off to the dispatchers, please. Thank you. Now, we will be moving to agenda session. We do have three first readings that we will explain each one before we get into it. The first one is the, actually, Alyssa, could you read off the first one?
Want me to skip to the first reading ordinances?
Salaries.
Which one?
Two thousand and twenty-four seventeen, just the header.
An ordinance amending and ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Joe.
Thank you. That ordinance is to approve titles and salary ranges for all borough officers and employees. It's something we do every couple of years, and it gives the ranges of where the employee should be making the salary in between the ranges, so it's a common ordinance that we do.
The second one is the fees as well. You want to take that one while we're there?
Second one, yep. The next one for eighteen was, we previously authorized ordinance two thousand and twenty-four-nine, decreasing electric rates by one penny. About five percent decrease. One section was omitted, so now we're just approving that one section. So everybody gets a one penny decrease.
Increase.
Decrease.
Decrease.
So that's when we decreased electric rates. We skipped one section of it. There was eight sections in the ordinance. One section didn't get the decrease, so we're just correcting that with this ordinance. So everybody gets it.
And the last one?
Nineteen is creating positions for, in the code book, for Code Enforcement Assistant and TB thirty-five manager, cameraman, camera person.
All right, thank you. Alyssa, we're going to go to second reading. If you could read two thousand and twenty-four dash thirteen.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter three fifty of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Motion wait for reading.
Motion by Councilman Kershensky, seconded by Councilman Seula.
All in favor?
Aye.
Andrea, could you please give us a explanation before we? All right, we're going to open up to the public. Anybody from the public? No, is this for the, is this for the ordinance? Not yet, okay. All right. First reading, sorry. Sorry, first call? Second, third?
Motion close. Mayor, I make a motion. Yep, Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn to the following meeting.
Motion by Councilman, sorry, Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, can you read two thousand and twenty-four fourteen?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four fourteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter one fifty-five entitled fees.
Motion wait for reading.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Olivera, can you give an explanation, please?
Yeah, this ordinance is just essentially setting the fees for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five recreation department programs. So we are already planning for next fall, winter, and spring season. So we just wanted to go ahead and get these on the book. This way, we can start advertising, giving families the opportunity to register early for programs.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to open it to the public. Do I want first? Second? Third, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballis, seconded by Council, Council President Olivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a council discussion, then? Anybody?
Make a motion to the dot.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Kershensky.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four fifteen.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four fifteen, an ordinance to amend the code of the Borough of South River, Chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by amending Section one ninety-three dash thirty-one point one, Schedule two A, Handicap Parking thereof.
Make a motion wait for reading.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Kershensky.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will be opening this up to the public. First call? Second call? Third call? Motion by Councilman Kershensky, seconded by Councilman Seula.
All in favor?
Council discussion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Ballis, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four sixteen.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four sixteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter two eighty-eight A entitled Special Events.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kershensky, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis.
All in favor?
Andrea, would you like to do an explanation, miss? Thank you. I'd like to open it to the public. First call? Second? Third call, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballis, seconded by Council President Olivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to the dot, second.
Motion by Councilman Kershensky, seconded by Councilman, Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you, Alyssa. We're going to go into two thousand and twenty-four seventeen, first reading.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four seventeen, an ordinance amending and ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash seventeen on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April eighth at seven P. M. by video conference via Zoom where in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four eighteen.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four eighteen, an ordinance amending Borough Code Chapter one fifty-five, one fifty-five fees.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash eighteen on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April eighth, seven P. M. by video conference via Zoom where in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey. And I do want to apologize. I just realized that this should say April twenty-second, not April eighth. So the next meeting is April twenty-second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Kershensky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, two thousand and twenty-four nineteen.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four nineteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter thirteen entitled Administrator Office of.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash nineteen on its first reading by title only and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with the second reading and public hearing to be held on April twenty-second at seven P. M. by video conference via Zoom where in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gershensky?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
We are going to go to reports. Bruce?
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. The two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four local aid projects, we're still working on the design, but moving along with that. The two thousand and twenty-three local aid transportation projects, which was Franklin Street, Olshesky Avenue, and Alborn Street, we had applied for a grant, and the Borough received five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that, which was very close to what we had asked for. So that is very good news. The two thousand and twenty-four one, we've not heard anything on. Substation maintenance, there's a change order on your agenda tonight for the batteries for switch house number three, which are the oldest batteries out there and due for replacements. And the final item is the stormwater assistance grant. Just, we're pretty much caught up with that, and we'll have to see if we can get funding for the next round.
Council, anything for Bruce? Joe?
Two items. First one is a resolution for a shared service agreement with the Borough of Milltown for Court Administration Services. The Borough of Milltown already approved their side. The Borough here has to approve our side, and then we'll enter it through a shared service agreement for Court Administration Services. Also, another resolution for recreation employees that we do every single year. That's it.
Thank you. Age?
Yes, the spring hydrant flushing starts April twenty-second, and it runs to May ninth. The information can be found in your Borough calendar, the website, and our DPW Facebook. And we'll also be putting nixels out every week prior to the week of the flushing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Council. Anything for age? Police chief?
Hear me?
I hear you.
Mayor, I don't have anything for this agenda, for this council session, but I just want to thank you for proclaiming next week National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. This is the tenth year we're actually doing this, this event. I know there's probably only one dispatcher that's been here all ten, ten years for this event, but I know all of them, both past and present, they appreciate that the Borough recognizes what they do for the town, for the police department, for the fire department, and for the rescue squad. So I thank you. Other than that, I don't have any, anything else. If anybody has any questions for me, all ears.
Anything? No, you're good. You're off the hook. Fire chief?
Mayor and Council, I do not have anything to report on for this month. I don't have an accurate call number. I would say roughly a hundred. It's been kind of, I won't say it, but call volume comes down.
It's good.
All apparatus are in service, with the exception of my chief's vehicle. If you go out for emergency lights on the rear to get repaired, that is in Somerville, it is all done. That'll get picked up within the next day or two. And other than that, progress.
Thank you. Anything?
Oh, one other thing. We did, we were awarded that seventy-five thousand dollar grant. Just to keep you in the loop, what I look to do with that seventy-five thousand, a maximum of forty to fifty thousand dollars will be dedicated towards interior structural firefighting gear, and then that extra twenty-five thousand will be put into inventory, structural firefighting gloves, exication gloves, helmets, masks, boots, the rest of the ensemble for the turnout here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea? Alyssa?
I have nothing tonight.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things on tonight's resolution. We will see the provision one fifty-one, awarding contracts to CDF for professional services. That's phase one in the water pipe replacement project that we submitted the application to the I Act. The last council meeting, I would ask to explain the I Act. I think very easily I could explain it by the mission statement. It says the New Jersey infrastructure bank is an independent state financing authority responsible for providing administering low interest loans that qualify to disallow these counties' regional authorities for water from there in New Jersey for the purpose of financing water quality infrastructure projects that enhance ground service for water resources. Ensure the safety of drinking water supplies, protect the public health, and make possible responsible sustainable economic development. Something up very well with the I Act. We hope the application will be going to the I Act within the next sixty days, and it will come around quickly. The other item I have on the resolutions is the resolution for one fifty-four being other construction areas super repaired. We have two super made classes, one on division three, division progression. Well, there's a problem with the range a lot, but they expect to wrap it up this week. Have to start the old brick first, Michael, one. On or about next month?
Thank you. I will now be opening it up to the public. You have ten minutes. Please state your address and your name. Oh, I forgot the council, I'm sorry. Sorry, I want that. Councilman Seula, please. I am so sorry.
The only thing I have is, we have a B B C meeting. They started to walk around Main Street, and they were looking at the businesses, talking with the business owners. And they want to come up with a game plan to have to start unifying Main Street and start bringing in some new business. So they're working on that, so hopefully we'll work at the next meeting.
Absolutely, that's great. Councilwoman Ballis?
Mine is just a report from the library. The Friends of the Library would like to thank everybody that came out during the book and bake sale. It was a great success, even though there were those, those really rainy days, but everybody was there, and they're very appreciative of that. They're also starting their walking club again at the Presty Park every Thursday at nine a.m., weather permitted. Lastly, they're going to be conducting a craft swap, which is any crafters in town that have extra materials or anybody that wants to start a craft or do any kind of supplies they want. What they're going to do is, they're going to be accepting donations of unwanted corrective supplies on April twenty-ninth. Those that donate between these days will receive an early bird ticket for the swap and will be allowed before the general public. Any preferable supplies in condition will be accepted for the swap, and any leftovers will be used by the library or the program. So if you donate between those days, you will get in at six o'clock before it's open to the public at seven o'clock.
Pardon me, councilperson?
Excuse me?
Pardon me, councilperson?
Yes.
It's April twenty-second to the twenty-sixth that you donate your supplies?
Yes, twenty-sixth, twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, and the swap itself is twenty-ninth.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I couldn't hear you, so I, I, I thought you misspoke. I'm very sorry.
No problem. So anybody that has crafts, if they're not using it, or people that want to take a craft, they're going to be doing that if they're lucky.
That's good, thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Ed will be releasing their budget at their April twenty-fifth public meeting. Anyone is welcome to come to the meeting to hear and discuss their budget. The meeting, the meeting will be at the high school at seven o'clock. The next public budget meeting will be held on Saturday, April twentieth at eight a.m. in the courtroom at the Public Safety Building on Main Street.
No, to be announced.
Yeah, it's going to be TBA.
To be announced.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that part.
Okay, sorry. So it's still in April, but the time could be announced. Please come and ask any questions you have about the town's budget for the next year. The Shad tree had a great volunteer response last week with the rain, garden planting. They had the Boy Scouts, Central Jerseys, C S E W A, and several high school students and parents over twenty of them sharing their time. And last I have is, I successfully completed the planning board online class, which was a required assessment for planning board members on being on my committee. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Kershensky?
Thank you, Colonel. The Uppsland Asian had their solar eclipse viewing today. Even though it was cloudy and everything too, I believe they got a couple of good views and everything like that. And that's pretty much it. It's been a quiet one as far as everything goes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council president?
So as Councilman DeZemian was mentioning, April twentieth, we're going to have our next public budget meeting. It's going to be at eight a.m. We will publicize the location. As of right now, the elevator at sixty-one Main Street is still filled with water, if I'm not mistaken, chief. So we're working, working very quickly to get that matter addressed, to make sure it's operable, but we want to give everyone an opportunity to come in and ask questions. So Councilman, sorry, Mayor Gindy will publicize it on his Instagram, official Instagram page, and we'll make sure that it's on the website once we determine the location. In terms of parks and rec, signups for the spring are ongoing. Just want to congratulate, we had, two of our youth cheerleading teams, our U-eight and our U-fourteen team competed in the Global Nationals event in Virginia Beach this weekend. Both teams placed second, and it was a great thing to see. Our little South River was competing against teams from North Carolina, Pennsylvania, everywhere. It was a national event, and it was great to see that our girls came in second place, so very proud of them. And then our September teams have a couple more competitions this month, and they'll be competing. Those are our local teams, and they're competing this weekend in Tom's River. So we're quickly approaching the end of our spring sports season. Summer rec is upcoming as well. Be on the lookout for that. We have a lot of great things happening in the town. Issue we're struggling with, that every program continues to struggle with, is just a lack of space. So thank you to the Board of Ed for always working with us and allowing us to use the gym. But it's time we, we start looking. We got to figure something out. Our programs continue to grow. Cheerleading had over, close to a hundred girls this year. Gymnastics, I think, were over fifty. It's, we're growing, and it's a beautiful thing to see. But now we have to figure out where we can put everyone. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to open up to the public. You have ten minutes. State your name and your address.
So sorry. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Councilperson Donna. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Ballis.
Ballis. Councilperson Donna, I'm president of the Friends of the Library. I'm Mary Ann Squire Mazer. I live at three forty Whitehead Avenue, which is Will It Matter? And as president of the Friends of the Library, I'd like to thank the entire community for supporting the Friends book sale, even through the horrible weather. We raised eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is amazing, given the conditions, and we're very appreciative. I'd also like to request that the library please be included. Uh, their closings, uh, holiday closings and emergency closings and, uh, internet outages on the Nixal alerts and on the township website. It hasn't been done, and I don't see why not, and I've requested it in the past. I don't understand it. And, um, you know, previous administrations have, uh, you know, it's fallen on a deaf ear. I happen to have requested it of this administration, and I'm sure you'll be amenable.
I'll have a take.
Thank you. Um, the library, after all, is, uh, I think, one of the best township, township assets there is. And, um, uh, I'd like to, um, as a resident of Will It Matter, I'd like to personally thank, um, the chief of police and the fire chief. Is he still here? No, he's gone. Um, uh, please thank all the first responders, um, for all of the services they provide to the residents of Will It Matter and South River Landing. And on that note, uh, I'd also like to personally thank and commend Mayor Peter Gindy, who since he's been a councilperson, has taken his own personal time and come, even if it's in the middle of the night, every time, every time we've had a power outage, to come and check on us. Um, and sometimes the generator doesn't come on, and, um, he's continued to do that since he was elected mayor, and he's just an incredible person. I was going to vote for, uh, his opponent, and, um, then I found out about that, and I met the mayor, and I was so impressed, um, and I'm so glad I voted for him.
Appreciate it.
And, um, I'm here as, uh, with a neighbor, um, as a, I'm a tenant advocate at Will It Matter, and I think the, um, chief of police, um, and the fire chief could, um, agree that Will It Matter is a drain on, uh, services that it shouldn't be, emergency services. The property, this, uh, senior property manager, um, instead of doing her job and handling residents' complaints with, um, regular resident meetings, which she does not hold. Uh, she's had one since the pandemic ended, except for when the elevator was broken for thirteen days. And we had, um, uh, we had to, um, the emergency services were carrying wheelchair-bound patients uh, uh, down, uh, seventy-nine steps. Um, there, uh, she had meetings then, uh, up on the, uh, floors, uh, you know, offering excuses. She has not, uh, taken out, uh, bids, uh, although her, uh, upper management do, um, we thought retrofit the elevator, but it turns out there's a second shaft. She has not seen to that. She, when there are tenant complaints about noise, she says it's apartment living, even though New Jersey leases guarantee tenants the right to quiet enjoyment. And instead of having, um, resident meetings, meeting with the tenants and trying to resolve it, issuing lease violations for noise or, uh, there were smoking in apartments. There was a lady who was, um, unfortunately had a very severe alcohol substance abuse and was smoking in her apartment. She did not, even though, uh, we complained every time there was smoke smell in the hallway, uh, I think the police chief could affirm, she did not, uh, do anything until the, uh, police and the, uh, EMTs were involved, the, uh, shortly before her death. She was, you know, drunk and smoking in her apartment. And, you know, that's a, God forbid, it could have been a fire. Then she issued a lease violation. Um, it's, it's just a horrendous situation. I also, um, do you have the gentlemen who has, uh, Public Works, correct? I'd also like to ask you if, um, they've replaced the dumpster yet? Do you know? I don't believe they have because they're both still rusted, and I see one, uh, uh, I saw today, there's garbage underneath, like a garbage bag coming out. The bottom fell out of the dumpster. And I don't believe, um, uh, they're recycling because, uh, which really bothers me because the, uh, residents often who are, um, uh, don't speak English, instead of, uh, we've gotten them to put up multilingual posters, but instead of, uh, checking the cameras to see who's not doing it and addressing it at resident meetings, which don't exist, um, the recycling bins are constantly filled with trash, and now the one bin, the bottom has fallen out of. And, um, uh, also, I'd like code enforcement to come out, please. I observed the senior property manager today. I was, uh, in my car, um, running it for a short time. I'm not able to drive presently, and, uh, she, uh, stepped over a huge tire and a four-by-four. Uh, there's also, a mattress has been there quite a long time, which, you know, could be filled with vermin. Uh, there's, um, a bed frame. There's a stack of four-by-fours and two-by-fours, and it's going out into the parking lot. God forbid someone get hurt. One of them, the end of it is so sharp. You know, children from the neighborhood sometimes ride their bikes or their skateboards through there. It's just a recipe for disaster.
Mary Ann?
It is really egregious. I'm so sorry.
What I'm going to do is tomorrow, no, don't, don't be sorry. What I'm going to do is tomorrow, I'll reach out to code enforcement as well as Arti. Uh, I am already speaking to the, the gentleman that you gave me his phone number, so we're already working on issues at your place. So in time, we'll get things resolved.
I just feel, you know, have, telling tenants to call the police when there's a noise issue. Telling tenants, uh, to, to call the police when there's this or that is egregious. You know, she should be doing her job.
I understand that, but, you know, the police, they're there to take the call, so.
Yeah, but it, it, it's not a police issue when a tenant is noisy.
I follow your saying.
You know, it's something that management should be taking care of.
No, I, I understand that.
You know, uh, i- it's not a police issue, especially when the one person who is, has been an ongoing issue for one tenant for years, uh, is eighty-two years old and doesn't speak English. What do I ask are the police going to do about that, except waste their time and resources when they could be helping someone else? You know, I thank you so much, and I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Come anytime.
You know, it's just a disgrace.
Come anytime. That's what we're here for.
Thank you so much for all, all of you too, and for serving our community.
I appreciate it. Anyone from the, anybody else from the public? Okay. First call? Second call? Do you have a motion?
Motion closed.
Motion by Councilman Ciola, seconded by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye. Alyssa, consent resolution? Oh, I'm sorry. I have, uh, mayor appointment, planning board. I am appointing Monica Almeida as the mayor's alternate. Uh, you will get information sent to you probably through email. Alyssa, consent resolutions?
Whereas Resolution twenty-two-four oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, now therefore be it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty-two-four one forty-seven to twenty-two-four one fifty-seven. One forty-seven authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement. One forty-eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificates. One forty-nine, property tax refund for a total disabled veteran. One fifty, appointment of twenty-two-four Recreation Department employees. One fifty-one, awarding a contract to CDM Smith Incorporated for professional services. One fifty-two, authorize certain utility refunds. One fifty-three, resolution authorizing change order number one for the project known as twenty-twenty-three Electrical Substation Maintenance. One fifty-four, resolution awarding a contract with B and W Construction for various sewer repairs. One fifty-five, accept March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes. One fifty-six, one fifty-six, authorize the bills and claims list. One fifty-seven, appoint Toher Walker as a probationary firefighter for the South River Fire Department.
What is your pleasure? Motion by Councilman, Councilwoman Ballis, like Council, seconded by Councilman Ciola.
Councilwoman Ballis? Councilman Ciola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
There isn't anything for new business. We're going to go into, uh, council comments. We will start with, uh, Councilman Krasinski.
First off, I'd like to thank all of our, uh, public circus workers, our police, our fire, uh, Robert Johnson, especially our VPW, who keeps us clean and safe and, um, operational from day to day. Aside from that, I really don't have anything else. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Um, the first legislature watch meeting will be held on Thursday, April twenty-fifth. Don't know the location and time yet, but the key thing is any resident can come to the meeting. Uh, this is a great time, great opportunity to be a part of the group, to help in keeping your town safe.
Councilwoman Ballis?
Um, as a new member to the library board, I would like to thank, where is she back there? Mary Ann, for your help with the Friends of the Library. If there's anything you need to do, just reach out. I have her information now. Councilman DeZemian, if you need anything from me, you let me know.
Thank you so much.
And I've been there. I'm very impressed with, uh, everything up there. It's very nice.
The new director is marvelous. She, she really has, um, uh, instituted some wonderful, uh, programs in a very short time.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question that I forgot about? Is it possible? About, um, not, about, um, uh, township, uh, statue?
Uh, we could do that. We could do it. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Real quick, real quick.
We, uh, the residents, uh, requested that they tow non-resident parking, uh, vehicles because, um, you know, there's not enough parking and there's no handicap parking spaces in the back lot. And, um, there, I know they're not in, um, compliance. They didn't do anything for like nine months, and recently she just put a sign on the door, uh, subject to towing, which I know is not within the statute. When I lived in another town, you had to post where, in the parking lot, where you would be towed to and who, and I'm sure you have some sort of similar statute.
That's a very good question. That's a good question. That would be a question for the police chief. Uh, that is a, I know it's a private property, but you could speak to him. He'll probably give you a direction for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anything else you want to say? Councilman Ciola?
Okay, um, just to reiterate, the height of flushing is going to start on April twenty-second through May ninth. Uh, time for me, seven-thirty to two-thirty during the day, and nine AM to five AM on the second shift around. Also, there's a paper shredding at Malaschess's funeral home on April twenty-seventh from twelve-thirty to three PM. Uh, bring your garbage bags of, uh, old paper and boxes of paper, and they will take care of it for you. Again, it's April twenty-seventh from twelve-thirty to three PM. Also, um, we just approved today a consent resolution, appointing, um, a junior firefighter, who has now reached the age of eighteen, to a firefighter for the Fire Department, South River. Um, again, we're looking for firefighters eighteen and up to become regular members, volunteer. And if you are fourteen to fifteen, you can become a cadet. And sixteen and seventeen, you can be a junior firefighter. Tyer Walker joined at sixteen years old as a junior firefighter. He worked his way up for two years and is now a regular firefighter for the borough. So again, anybody interested, contact the Fire Department at, um, seven-three-two-two-five-seven-nine-two-one-seven, and leave a message if no one answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Yeah, as we wind down the, uh, budget process, I just want to again, uh, thank Joe and Art and the Budget Committee for everything that they've done. I've had the opportunity to speak about the budget to a number of residents that have asked questions. Um, and one of the questions that keeps coming up is, you know, the ten percent water increase and why we did that. And, um, no one on this administration, no one up here would like to raise water rates, would like to raise any type of rates. But sometimes the reality is, that's something you have to do. When you look across the state of New Jersey, I've had the opportunity to, uh, look at, you know, not only electric but water. Consistently, you know, you see multiple utilities that are increasing anywhere, where was it, Joe? From five to fifteen, e- even some we saw, I think, at twenty percent. You know, we tried to minimize the impact. That's why, you know, the Budget Committee, we felt very strong that, okay, if we're going to raise water, we have to do something to make sure we're minimizing the electrical impact on our residents. And that's why we decided to raise, uh, I'm sorry, decrease the electric by five percent. Uh, the other question that I keep receiving, um, is, well, why don't you raise the electric rates even more with the battery storage project? Or, you know, the battery storage project is, uh, in my opinion, um, the best thing that this could have happened to this borough. Uh, it has been a, really a godsend, but the battery storage project is not guaranteed every year. Uh, you cannot guarantee the cost savings. So in my opinion, when we discussed with the Budget Committee and we discussed with Mr. Zanga and Art, we decided to use the cost savings that we could on capital projects that would minimize how much the borough has to bond. When we're bonding, we're looking at interest rates, we're looking at down payments. There's no need to spend, uh, funds when we don't have to. And the battery storage project really is an opportunity for us to continue to work on paving additional streets, uh, fixing the infrastructure. And guys, I, 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 the electrical car mandate's coming down the road. Uh, and we as a borough need to be prepared, uh, for what that's going to mean for the grid, what that's going to mean for the, um, utilities. So little by little, we're going to continue to do what we have to do. And again, I just want to thank the Budget Committee for all their hard work. This has been a grueling process of what, since January of meeting and trying to come up, and it's finally coming to the end, the light's at the end of the tunnel. So just want to thank everyone for all their hard work with that, and that's all I have here.
Thank you. Um, with the Budget Committee, I can't thank you guys enough for doing this kind of work. South River is a town that's growing, and as it grows, there are changes. Along with changes comes expenses. Uh, we try to cut back as much as we can, but at the same time, there are things that are needed to be done. So look into the future is what I'm going to tell you. There's a lot of changes coming your way. That's all I have to say. Uh, today, we, uh, experienced the eclipse, which was a sight to see. I hope everyone had an idea, uh, chance to actually take a glimpse at it. Along with the eclipse, we, uh, experienced a, uh, earthquake, which everybody was okay and safe, uh, thanks to the Police Department, Department of Public Works, uh, as well as the Fire Department. Uh, as you all know, the weather is getting better. Spring is here. Please drive safely. I can't tell you how hard it is to do that when you're driving down a street more than twenty-five miles per hour or even less. Your kid's getting hurt. Please drive slowly. So I'm going to ask. We are going to go into executive session. Um, there's going to be no actions taken after the executive session. We are going to adjourn the meeting. You're more than welcome to stay. You're more than welcome to leave, whatever, uh, interests you. Uh, Alyssa, if you could, please go into, uh, twenty-two-four dash one fifty-eight.
Resolution twenty-two-four one fifty-eight, whereas Section Eight of Chapter Two Thirty-One Public Law of nineteen-seventy-five permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and the County of Middlesex and State of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the here-and-after specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Contract negotiations be a further result that such record of the above discussion be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Motion by Councilman Krasinski, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballis?
Yes.
Councilman Ciola?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Uh, motion by Councilman DeZemian, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Ciola, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Ballis.
All in favor?